Okay. I will call this meeting to order. This is a special meeting of the Blue Lake City Council. It's Friday, August sixteenth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty P. M. in the Skinner Store Community Center. Please join me in the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you establish a quorum of the council, please?
Mayor Jones.
Here.
Mayor Protemshul.
Present.
Councilmember Edgar.
Here.
Councilmember Scifani.
Here.
And we are now on item two, approve the agenda. Start with councils or anyone that would like to move anything around and change anything?
Yes, I would like to move future agenda items in front of the closed session.
Okay, and then I'll open it up to public. Is there anyone that would like anything moved around that is here for any specific reason? Okay, back to council for an approval with a motion and a second and a vote.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda with future agenda items to come after council reports and staff reports.
A second.
Motion made by Elise Scifani, seconded by Christopher Edgar to approve the agenda with the change of adding future agenda items under reports of council and staff. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have an agenda. Item three, public comment. The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake that is not on the agenda. The council may provide up to fifteen minutes for this public input session. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. Is there anyone here from public con- for public comment? Kent Swatzky, and I don't see anybody on Zoom right now.
Not yet.
Okay, go ahead, Kent.
Kent Swatzky, I come before you humbly. Everything I'm saying here will have direct consequences and effect on everything that happens in Blue Lake. So I think it's appropriate, but not on the agenda. I attended what I refer to as an A. A. meeting today, and we came to a very important decision. I'm supposed to come here and start explaining things to people regarding that. Has nothing to do with alcohol. This autistic anonymous and many of us came out of the closet years ago, basically like Elon Musk, and we've owned it and we acknowledge it. And part of what you need to understand is the autistic of controlled society ever since we've been here. Created the Industrial Revolution, created everything that's ending in climate change right now. We also have the solution so that some of us will continue to be here. And I'm hoping that Blue Lake will be that kind of place where if the human race downsides by ninety-five percent, we will exist. Some people say this won't happen. They're not autistic. We, as autistic, have certain skill sets. It's a spectrum. It totally varies. From somebody who can't even participate in the world whatsoever to the Elon Musk's, some of us have skill sets which are doing deals, and that's what we do. So the deals that will be happening in Blue Lake will be frequently dealt with from the autistic perspective. And so I wanted to bring that to you at this time, and I appreciate you taking the time to listen to me. I think you'll find it's on point. And as this meeting proceeds, and we have future meetings in the future regarding Blue Lake, I think you'll understand what I'm talking about. Thank you for my opportunity to speak today.
Is there any other public comment at this time on a non-agenda item? Okay, we'll move on then. Item four is receive letter of resignation from the city council from Elizabeth McKay.
Do we have, actually have the letter?
Okay, so this letter is dated July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four to Annalee Gonzalez, city clerk. Dear Annalee, I am writing to inform you of my decision to resign from the position of city council effective July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. It has been an honor to serve on the council and represent our community for the past year and a half. I would like to express my gratitude for the opportunities and experiences I have had working alongside others whose goals are to improve the quality of life in the city. I will be available to assist during then the transitional period and will support my successor as needed. Please let me know how to proceed with filing the seven hundred. Thank you. Sincerely, Elizabeth McKay. So attorney plots, the procedure is that we have to make a motion and second to accept your resignation, or how is that procedure?
Her resignation is effective. The council doesn't need to accept it. You just receive and file the correspondence. And that can be done via motion or it can be done via unanimous consent. Either way is fine.
Okay, so I'm used to motions and seconds myself. So, all right, do we have a motion to accept the resignation and a second?
I would move to accept it. So second.
Okay, motion made by Elizabeth, Elise Scifani, seconded by Angela Shaw to accept Elizabeth McKay's resignation. Any further discussion from council? Open to public? Kent Swatzky? And then was there another hand? Yes, thank you.
As always, I would like to thank Elizabeth McKay for her service and the time she put in here, the same as I do in the supervisor's chamber. Sometimes I'm contentious with people. But on the other hand, you you do represent and you're here and your desire to serve. And so when each of you go, if I'm not here for, you're not around sometime, when each of you are no longer on here, just just feel that's my sentiment regarding that. So thank you.
Lori Ponti.
Also to thank you to Elizabeth for her her time and her work. So I have a question. Since her resignation is dated July twenty-fourth, does that mean that her vacancy needs to be filled by August twenty-fourth? If there's a thirty-day vacancy or my understanding before this meeting was that the vacancy would be filled at the September meeting. So what is the understanding of how that time works? Because we're already at the sixteenth of August. That's just a question.
Thank you for your question. We'll we'll address some of those to our lawyer. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, back to council for the vote. All those in favor of accepting Elizabeth McKay's resignation, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So point of order then, then when does the timeline start for posting this and getting applications for the empty seat?
Yeah, that's that's actually, we're going to hover under the next agenda item. So we want to go there.
Let's go there.
Okay.
So we're going to discuss and decide whether to fill vacated city council seat by special election or appointment, provide direction to staff to implement process to fill vacated city council seat. Now, special elections are very expensive, and so we probably don't want to go that route.
Particularly since we have an election in November.
Right.
Sixty months away.
Yeah. Okay, so what's the procedure then that you recommend?
Yeah, so the government code establishes a procedure to fill seats vacated during the term. And essentially, that process begins tonight. There's a sixty-day timeline when the council is formally notified of a resignation to either fill the seat by appointment or fill or call for a special election.
Sixty days?
Sixty days. So within that sixty days, and the hope tonight was that tonight we would, the council would decide whether you want to call for a special election or put in place a process to appoint through a call for nominations, interview, and selection process. If you go the special election route, unfortunately, since we're within a hundred and fourteen days of the next election, we're too close to put it on the November ballot, which means it has to go on the next regularly scheduled election date, which is March. So we'd be without a council member for that seat from now until March. If we were to go the appointment route, the council through staff would issue a notice of vacancy and request for indications of interest from eligible residents who desire to be considered. The notice should require that indications of interest be submitted by a date that will allow the council to make the appointment within sixty days of today's date. So need to move fairly quickly.
Today's date or the July twenty-fourth?
Today's date.
So if we decide today, we're going to appoint people, someone has to be appointed within sixty days?
Correct.
Okay.
October sixteenth.
Yeah, so you know, once we got statements of interest, the council has options. You can appoint an ad hoc committee to initially review the applications. In terms of appointing council members, I generally don't recommend an ad hoc committee because I think everybody who submits a statement of interest should be interviewed and have a chance to present before the council. So I'd recommend we bypass that and just set a meeting at which time in open session. Anyone who's interested and meets the eligibility criteria is is interviewed and then selected through, you know, council deliberation and a normal motion process. None of this can take place in closed session. It's all open session, discussion, and deliberation. And so, you know, like the mayor said, special elections are expensive. If there's not a county-wide election happening in March, then typically a special election ranges anywhere from thirteen to twenty thousand dollars to con- to conduct. And also because of the timing, we can't go to November. So I think appointment would be the best possible scenario. Because the vacancy from council member McKay happened in the first term, well, the first half of her term, but less than a hundred and thirty days prior to the next general election, the person appointed to fill the vacancy will hold office for the unexpired term, i.e. through twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And so tonight, again, just reiterate, what we should accomplish is 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 two things. One, special election or appointment. And then two, what is the schedule that the council would like to implement to allow for an appointment to occur within sixty days?
I I think we should do a special meeting for this on October fifteenth and have our appointees have their submissions in at least two weeks in advance. So on the first of October, the submissions should be all input, and then we have two weeks to decide and go over that stuff and then have the meeting for the interviews.
Why do you want to wait so long? I mean, we have a meeting, okay, we have a meeting this month. That's the twenty-seventh.
It gives the people a month, a straight month to do, to put everything in. And then we have two weeks after they put their, I mean, we can do it immediately after they turn the deadline if you want to, that next, that next one.
So is there a minimum amount of time that has to elapse between now and the appointment?
No, the, well, statutorily, no. I just advise that you should give enough time to get the word out and allow people to submit indications of interest. But, you know, typically it happens within a thirty-day period.
Yeah.
You know, two weeks, three weeks from tonight, indications of interest are due. A week later, interviews occur, and the appointment either occurs at that meeting or a subsequent meeting. That's obviously up to the council, but we just need to keep our eye on that sixty-day date and make sure that that's good.
I mean, our September meeting is September twenty-fourth. It's a regular meeting. I don't see why we can't do it that evening.
Why couldn't we do it on the twenty-sixth? Why couldn't we announce it on the twenty-sixth, right?
And then Or we can announce it tonight.
Yeah.
We're announcing it tonight, so be quiet. You're talking about August twenty-seventh, our regular meeting?
Well, no, oh, I'm sorry, but I
I'm confused.
Well, if we were to do a, I think it would depend on how heavy the agenda is on September twenty-fourth.
I absolutely believe that we should have a special meeting.
Agreed. That's where I would, so then if we were to do a special meeting, then we could maybe do it that first week in like October first. And then that would give, you know, folks time. We could do it, yeah, we could do the special meeting on October first. And then we would be well within, we would be within two weeks of that sixty-day timeline. So if we're going to do a special meeting, why don't we just split the month and do it on October? Say our normal, our normal October meeting would be on the twenty-second?
Yeah.
So why don't we just have it on October eighth? And then that way, that's a, it's a Tuesday night and you know, we're not rushing, we're not right up against the deadline and we're not doing it at a odd time. It seems like a happy, a happy medium.
Okay, October eighth, you want to do it?
Yeah.
Special meeting?
Yeah, that day works.
Okay. And I've been involved with this before. In fact, that was the the first time I got on this council this, this this time. Anyway, I was elected, but I think it was two elections before that. I stood in front of the council at the time and gave a little presentation of why I wanted to be on the council. And then the council asked questions, and any other applicants came up and did the same, and then a decision was made. But if we have the paperwork ahead of time, you know, we can see the qualifications. So we can float it tonight, starting tonight, with the understanding that they will be due for the October eighth special meeting at six thirty, and we'll make all this in a motion because we need to do this because we don't want, we want it to be an appointment and not a special election. That has to be done by motion.
Yeah, but but to Chris's point about having those applications available to, for us to look at ahead of time, can we can, we can do that, right?
I mean, you can have applications do in advance.
The day before our regular scheduled meeting of September.
September twenty-fourth?
Why?
Yeah.
That way we can review them without having another meter.
Can they just be sent, can they just be sent to us? Could, could you just deliver them to us?
Outside of a meeting?
Outside of a meeting?
Well, I mean, the, the indicates of interest are public records. Sorry, once they're submitted, they're public records. So yes, they can be posted through the website. They can be made available to the council. They can be made available to the public. If you want them in advance, certainly you'll have time individually. Of course, your case can't, I'll, I'll send a meeting deliberate on it, but individually review them and
Right.
And think about questions you want to ask, you know, any of the particular applicants, certainly. I think it's probably a good idea.
So then could we request staff to to have those available to council members by October first? I mean, is that, would that be reasonable?
As long as the notice says, in order to be considered, you must submit your indications of interest by such and such date, then absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So if we say that we want them due by the last, say, Friday in September, like
Twenty-seventh.
Friday, the twenty-seventh, and then they should be delivered to council on the Monday following on September. Or even Tuesday. So could you share with us, are there any restrictions or protocol that that we should follow in terms of speaking to these candidates outside of a public meeting?
Because it's an interview process, I would recommend that all your correspondence and communication with the applicants happen at the meeting at which time they're interviewed. I would, you know, ex parte communications with applicants are not unlawful. But I do think so that every applicant has a fair opportunity to present their case, I think the council should refrain from interviewing them outside of a public meeting. That's my recommendation. It's not unlawful if if any of, any of the council members were to reach out and and have a conversation in advance. I do think that should be disclosed at the time of the interviews, if there are some communications outside of the meeting, just so that all the applicants are have the benefit of knowing that. But again, I think it's best to just have those conversations with the benefit of the full council hearing all the questions and answers.
In open session.
In open session.
Yeah, absolutely. And then another question I had was, since we have an election coming up, and there's, I think, at the moment, along with myself, there are seven applicants for the three council positions in November. If one of those applicants decided to apply for this seat, would their, their, then their name would still be on the ballot in November because those have already been put in on the ballot. So what? How does that work? Or is there any way for that to work?
So the way that we're, and 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 if there is any reason to move up the interviews because we are coming up to election, I think that may be the reason. There may be some people who are running who wish to be appointed, and if they're appointed, they may not want to continue to campaign. But again, October eighth is is fine. The way it would work is if the person is appointed to the seat, that seat would be deemed vacated upon their being elected to a different seat. Because you can't hold two seats at the same time, obviously. So that seat that they were appointed to would be vacated in December when the election results are certified, and there'd be a new appointment process at that point. And that would be probably the preference of the individual too, because the appointed seat is a two-year seat through twenty twenty-six. You get elected to a four-year seat. That's the seat you're going to want anyway. So we would, you know, come back to this process in December when the election results are certified and the new council, if he or she is already serving as an appointed member, would take their seat and is an elected seat.
And so if if the person who was appointed was also elected, but they chose to stay in the two-year seat, is that a choice that they can make? Or not?
That is a choice. No, they cannot. Once they're elected, the elect, the elected seat would 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 have precedence over the appointed seat.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, that makes sense. Okay. So we need to decide that we're not going to have a special election. We want it by appointment. We have some dates we've got firmed up, which maybe should be in our motion. And are there any other questions from council for our attorney? I can open it up to public. Any comments on this, Mr. Swatzky?
I like your process. I like the thought that went into it. If I recall right, and I might be wrong, but I think, I think President was appointed, and Matt was in the room or something like that, and at that time, so that seemed to work functionally. And of course, Chris was, had run for the position or something. And so, so when when you're looking at this thing, I I strongly would recommend, obviously, two of you won't be on the thing, but you have five other people that have gone through the effort, shown that they genuinely want to sit in there and are willing to go to the, take the time to be here. I I would hope that unless somebody really shows exceptionally more things, that that interest would weigh really heavy in your decision. The other thing, as far as what I found in in Blue Lake, I I like a diversified council. I do find that people who have possibly had a little bit more life experience in Blue Lake may be a little bit better than someone who might come, have come within a very short time period. I can't say they can't study quickly, but just having the institutional knowledge and the working relationship of that, I think, is important. I think that should weigh heavy as far as your decision goes. So other than that, I look forward to seeing the process. And I think you have have a really good process going on forward here. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Any other public comment? Yes. Could you identify yourself as well? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kat Napier, and I'm one of the approved candidates for this November selection. That said, I'm wondering with the interview process, and you have that for October eighth, and that to be in the public forum. If it should happen that I was in that a point that in the running for the appointment, how, I'm going to be out of town. I'm going to be out of state October eighth. Is there going to be an alternate? Not just for me, but anybody else who might not be able to meet that particular date for interviews, public interviews? So that essentially is my question. Thanks.
That's a good question.
Well, we have been having Zoom as an alternate, so I suppose that is something that we could continue for that evening. Our community seems to really like it, so I'm completely open to doing a Zoom interview. That would be fine. Yeah, absolutely. And speaking of the interview, there are certain questions we can and cannot ask of candidates. Can you elaborate a little bit on that? For instance, can we ask them what political party they're affiliated with?
Local governments or nonpartisan, I I advise against that. You know, certainly, you know, since it is a nonpartisan seat, and typically you don't have to disclose, it's it's probably a question I shy away from.
Okay.
You know, in in terms of questions, I mean, obviously, this isn't an employment interview, so there's not legal barriers to types of questions that you can ask. But I would keep it focused on experience, vision, commitment, and try to understand as a policymaker, which the council is, as a policy-setting board, you want to understand experience, passion, commitment, vision, those types of things is what I'd stick to.
Thank you.
Sure.
That's a good guideline.
Again, each of you is free to ask questions as you deem fit. It's your interview.
Okay.
So another thought, October eighth is getting really close to the election. And like was mentioned, campaigning. And I guess, I guess this appointment would have no bearing on the election, which I didn't realize that the the seat would be vacated after the election. So that's a critical piece of information. So may, I don't know, that might be a reason to move it up if we wanted to do that. Just to give people more, I don't know, more time. There's going to be a, I'm sure there's going to be a debate. Legal women voters will probably do a debate like they did two years ago. And that would probably be happening in October.
I know, I know. I was actually looking at early October because of early voting now. A lot of people vote, you know, quite a bit before the election date. So I was looking at early October to notify the league for a debate as we've had in the past, and probably sometime in the beginning of October, so.
Do we know when when ballots are going to be mailed and when the early, earliest dates of voting might be?
It seems like it gets early and earlier here. I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. At least three weeks before the election, I I I think everybody should have a ballot is typically what I'm recalling from last year. But again, that's just what I'm recalling.
Okay, well, it's something to think about, because I was looking at early October for a debate night.
So the earliest, if we made a declaration tonight that the seat is open and invite people to submit applications, the earliest we could appoint would be a month, thirty days from tonight.
No, you could appoint next week if you wanted to.
Yeah.
It's just about giving people enough time to get the word out. There's a seat open to get the material and to schedule the special meeting. There, there's no required timeframe that needs to lapse between now and appointment. It's just a matter of putting in place a process that allows for that, for that to happen.
Yeah. It's kind of confusing because we have different rules for different things, like our commission seats are supposed to be advertised, some of them for thirty days, some of them, the municipal code doesn't stipulate that. So.
Yeah, a little bit more discretion here. It's government code that sets this process. And so, you know, I I do think it's probably best to have at least two weeks of advertisements and allowing people to present their submissions. But if you wanted to have the interviews in mid to late September, that would be fine, too.
I know. That's why I was looking at our regular meeting of September twenty-fourth. I mean, the other thing we have to think about is we're operating with a four-person council. You know, if someone's sick or something happens, then it's down to three. So, you know, it becomes important, I think, to have as full of a council as we can as soon as possible.
No.
That's too much.
But I will defer to the council if that's the way you feel about it. I'm just saying that it's been done.
Our regular council meetings go three, three and a half hours. To add another hour onto that is ridiculous.
An hour to interview people.
I'm definitely down for a special council meeting.
Okay, that's fine. I will defer to a special council meeting. I don't have a problem with it. Yeah, we need to definitely choose that we don't want a special. Yeah, um, we need to definitely choose that we don't want a special election. We want this by appointment. So make sure that's.
I can motion to fill the council seat by appointment and have the applications due by September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
And did you want to also include that our, our interviews will occur at a special meeting on October eighth?
Sure, and have it occur on October eighth, special meeting.
Council member, can you clarify the date?
September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Application deadline.
Yeah.
Applications due.
And appointments will be made on October eighth.
At a special council meeting at six thirty.
Okay, we have a motion on the meetings earlier.
No.
Um. I second, sorry. All right, there's been a motion by Christopher Edgar, seconded by Angela Scholl to, um, fill our vacancy through appointment, applications due Friday, September twenty-seventh. Meeting on October eighth to interview candidates for that opening. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Do you want public comment?
Aye.
Wait, what?
I thought I already had public. Yeah, I already had the public. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It passes. All right. We are now on council correspondence. Is there any correspondence, manager maker?
Just the, um, from Elizabeth.
Right. Consent agenda, none. Reports of council and staff. I guess we'll go around the room for that. Uh, Christopher Edgar, did you attend any meetings?
Not yet.
Okay. Well, let's, uh, Elise.
I sort, I attended the end of a Public Safety Commission meeting, um, and I sort of, I missed the part of the discussion, but, um, there is going to be a safety fair happening uh, at Perrigo Park, um, and it's going to be a joint venture between the Resource Center and the Public Safety Commission. And I believe that's slated for September. Um, but I don't think there's a date that's been picked or that.
It's the sixteenth or the fourteenth. It was on the, I.
It's a Saturday?
Yeah, on the last.
That would be the fourteen.
Yeah, it's the fourteen.
Okay.
Yes.
Of September.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's a, um, kind of a fun thing that's going to be coming up.
It's going to be, hopefully going to be pretty big. There's going to be food, bands, speakers, tabling events, local vendors putting on stuff and examples and stuff. It'll be good.
Do you know what time it starts?
Hmm?
Do you know what time it starts?
It's like eleven to two, I think.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, any other meetings, Elise? Uh, well, I went to a lot of meetings since I'm the alternate to Elizabeth McKay. I had to go to her meetings. So we started with Monday. I'm the alternate at the Blue Lake Arts and Heritage Commission meeting at six o'clock here and, um, the commission talked about the town square project update. Um, some art-based traffic calming installations they're thinking of doing, getting the school involved with the Greenwood project and having um, the children maybe paint along the, um, crosswalks, that kind of thing. Um, they talked about a fire hydrant art project in town and they're thinking of ways to do that where maybe we can provide the paint and then the artists can provide their, um, service. Um, they had an ad hoc committee meeting for that fire hydrant project and also for the murals and sculptures that they're talking about having in town. So that was Monday's meeting. And Tuesday, it's a good thing I like to go to meetings. On August thirteenth at four thirty, I am the alternate to the Blue Lake Economic Development Commission meeting. And, um, that's a, a very good, a group of people, as is the Arts and Heritage folks. Um, they talked about the retail cannabis ordinance and um, they're going to, um, discuss that further. They talked about the idea of a vacant commercial property ordinance and we've talked about that before. Eureka is in the process of doing that as well as Arcata. So there was a lot of discussion on that. Um, there was a discussion on the Blue Lake branding and signage prod, signage project. There's a new sign that's going to be going up, um, across from the roundabout, um, and so there was some discussion on that. Then there was an update on the town square construction project, the Greenwood Avenue project, the sports complex development concept, which is, um, the idea that where the, uh, B and B toilets are now located, that business may turn into a sports complex development if it changes hands to a new owner. Um, they talked about a container village development concept, which is something that may occur where our corporation yard is. There's a lot going on in Blue Lake. It's very exciting. Um, they also got an update on the bike park development out at the Powers Creek District. Also an update on the Botawat Community Project and how that's going. Um. And then also some discussion about the northern side of Taylor Way, the master plan and parcel subdivision. They had a report from the Chamber of Commerce and we have a new Chamber of Commerce president and that is Justin Goode. Congratulations. Um, and then there was a city manager report about what the Parks and Recreation Department is doing, um, and their update on that. That was Tuesday. Wednesday, I was at a city selection committee meeting and the Board of Supervisors. This is a meeting that's, um, all the mayors of all the towns in Humboldt County. Um, and interestingly enough, they're all women except for the mayor of Ferndale. Um, meet and the reason we meet is very infrequent. The last time we met was in on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, so over a year ago. We meet whenever there's an appointment that needs to ma, be made. And in this case, there were two appointments that needed to be made. Um. And they were the appointment of two regular members and one alternate to the local agency formation commission, also commonly known as LAFCO. And so, um, at that meeting that evening, which I ended up chairing, um, Meredith Matthews, the Arcata, uh, mayor stepped up to be one of the, um, members that will represent Ark County on LAFCO. And Cheryl Kelly, who is the mayor of Trinidad, stepped up to be the, uh, member of that committee. And then as an alternate, we had the see, mayor of Fortuna, I think. Um, and then the other appointment we had was a representative to serve on the Cal Remote Access Network Committee. Um, and this meets very infrequently. It's a request from the sheriff's, sheriff's office. And the mayor of Fortuna, Tammy Trent, filled that position. That was Wednesday. Last night, I was at a Humboldt County Association of Governments meeting. Are you tired of me already? Sick of me yet? All right. And the, um, nice big packet here, if anyone wants some nice reading. Mainly this is because we had an overall work program and so, um, that was passed last night. So that's what you'll see in most of this packet. Um, but we did have some interesting presentations. One of them we've had already, which is the, um, Measure O, the tax that is going to be on the ballot. It's a one cent tax. Um, and it will go to roads, primarily to roads, and some of it will go to transit. And so we've had these folks come here and tell us about that as well. We also had a presentation from Jessica Karenko, who has the Keys Campaign, which has to do with uh, housing in the area. And then we had another, um, presentation from Cal Transcycle Two Highway Maintenance Four Projects. So that was also happening. Um. That's all I think I have. And there's tonight's meeting. So that made a full week of meetings. All right, moving on to.
Uh, nope, no meetings yet.
Okey doke, I guess we're done. Um, report of staff.
Um, if you guys are okay, I can wait till our regular meeting to provide you a full manager's report.
Yes, please.
Perfect, yeah, that's great.
Okay, that leaves us over here to future agenda items. Um. Is there any? One that has an addition for our future agenda? That'd be our regular meeting of August twenty-seventh.
The only thing I have on the list is.
Yeah.
Is to discuss the ed, the formation of an ad hoc committee to.
Um. See, I'm trying to think, um. Oh, okay. Yeah. Um, is there anything that we need to have on the agenda from staff?
Um, well, we do have a, a running list of items, um, but I wasn't prepared to bring all of those to you tonight, but we do have quite a few items for your next, your next meeting.
Okay. And we'll have our agenda meeting.
Right, right. Do you want to share those as, as you're able to remember them? Just so we can kind of get a heads up on it.
Um, you'll have your audit. Um. We have the Arts and Heritage Hydrant Project. Um. You know, off the top of my head, I have a full board that I, I put everything on a list. So off the top of my head, though, I can't really think of, um, what all is on there.
Okay.
And you all made about that.
Mm hmm.
To set the agenda anyway.
Yeah, we have an agenda meeting. We have an ad hoc committee meeting about that. Okay, um, so that leaves us to.
Comment, public, what's your public comment?
Public comment?
Don't do.
On the future agenda items. Okay. Is there any public comment on future agenda items? It is in a motion, so, okay. Uh, Kat.
Well, I'd like to support what Elise wanted to put on there. Um, and I, I would like to also say, uh, for those of us who really like to know in advance what will be on the agenda, if Mandy could go ahead and put the list that she doesn't have on the top of her head on the webpage, so we would have access to that rather than us just finding out about these topics on Friday, uh, at four thirty or five before the meeting. Just enables us to see those future events. So that would be great if, if that could be, be done as far as transparency goes and then we'll know a little bit more what's already pre-planned for that next meeting. Thank you for the opportunity to request this.
Is there any other public comment? Yes, on Zoom?
Julie, Chris, Julie Christie.
I'm. Kat, Kat, hear you real well, Julie. Can you get closer to the microphone?
Um, in-house can turn up my volume. It's on their laptop. Um. I just wanted to thank Elizabeth McKay. I'm a little late, but for new agenda items, I think we need to discuss the delinquency of our planning commission in the last, I think we're moving fourteen months now. They've only had three meetings, um, so maybe some more PR on getting commissioners, but, but because of that lack, I would think that council would be concerned about that at this point in time and perhaps warrant a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Any other public comment on future agenda items? All right, we'll move on then to item ten, close session. Um. We need to go into closed session, a conference with real property negotiations. So.
Second. Before we do that, we just need to take public comment on the close session.
Oh, that's right.
Okay. Well, we haven't had the vote yet, so we're still good. We have a motion made by Angela Scholl, seconded by Christopher Edgar to go into closed session per government go, code. Is there any input from the public? Kat.
As I was explaining to you during public comment on non-adjourned items, um, this is what a lot of us autistic people do. We do deals. And so I, I'm a, uh, unpaid but willing consultant with Erin McClure regarding this one and what's coming before you. Basically, in, in my understanding is that, is that it's in your court to go ahead and propose to her what's being brought to you tonight. Um, strongly suggest that you would, uh, consider doing that. Of course, this is just a basic framework as far as how that's going. She has a forester and she will have legal staff later to review this. Um, so we're kind of like a team. Uh. I play, I, I, I enjoy a show called Shark Tank and that's how we do deals. So highly recommend you move forward. I wouldn't want to try. If I were you, I would not be varying at all from what's been suggested here. I think that's quite equitable for the city. Uh. In Shark Tank, if someone's, uh, suggestions not follow through with frequently withdrawn and it frequently ends up saying, well, my recommendation would be they didn't want that, just asked for twice as much. So you're not going to go down on the deal. She doesn't need this, in my opinion. And I think she's been very tolerant. Uh. Part of the problem in negotiating here that you'll find is that you have someone in the room who is very confrontational, uh, with her and that does not make good for her thing. So maybe in the future, when you have future things that you substitute, uh, someone else for the city manager on this. I know, uh, there is some conflict between, uh, her and Chris Edgar. Uh, there was some things involving, in my opinion, some, some inappropriate language was used and when that used amongst people, you also do not really feel like you want to go ahead and do a deal. So you're in an interesting spot here. I highly recommend you, uh, tread very carefully on this and, uh, and, and move forward in some way, shape, form. I've strung, I've been working with your staff, as some of you may be aware of, to try and bring this to you to get some resolution and, uh, hopefully in spite of some of our obstacles we have out here, we can do so. So I guess we'll have a report out after closed session, after the meeting. Is that correct? And that's, that would be my, my question when I'm done with my comments.
We always do.
Okay.
Is there any other public comment? Concerning this agenda item. All right, we'll come back. We've had a motion in a second. To go into closed session. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? We're in closed session.